Ready to go? Welcome, everybody. URL tech meeting. Like to do a roll call. Pat Brunstad.
Here.
George Lee.
Here.
Shannon Rubin.
Here.
Mary Le Duke. Is absent today. Are we ready to? Open it up to public comment? Do we have any public comment online or in person?
I can't. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I can't see the room. Is there actually people in there beside you three?
We have one citizen.
Okay, thank you.
And there we go.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Let's move on. We have been doing a lot of calculations based on. Previous year's LTAC collections. Current year LTAC collections. And have come up with a conservative budget because we are feeling that the hotels aren't necessarily hitting record. Sales and we don't want to get ourselves into a bind. Shall we, are we still in the 500,000 area roughly of of fund balance as of the close of basically this month?
Around 600.
Around 600. So the thought process was to. Total up what we thought we were going to receive in this calendar year of 24 and 25 based on previous years. And then be conservative. By keeping a. At least in dollars in contingency budget, it gives us a little bit more leeway on opportunities in. The beginning of the year, February, March, on a potential second. LTAC meeting and LTAC awards. That. We felt that coming up with a budget for this meeting of about 1.2 million dollars in available funds was reasonable. And then that gives us some cushion. To not go in the red in that fund. And probably have opportunities in. February or March for a second award level. Does anybody want to talk about their feelings about? Budget? Based on personal experience in your hotels? Or convention center business?
Well, I'll just say that we're. I have not sold rooms this low this early ever. In eight years and I'm. Struggling to be competitive with people that are selling their rooms at an extremely low rate and. Even though we're cleaner and we're taking care of our property and there's advantages of booking for us, I have rooms sitting at $60 right now. That are not filled. I've not had that before. So I think being conservative is extremely important, especially when you consider online reviews of other hotels. My major concern is with the Bayview fire and the lack of care that some of the properties are. Seemingly going through and knowing that Shiloh is still in bankruptcy status is. If you have another hotel get out of the pool of LTAC. We might be in a really bad financial bind and that's my biggest concern.
So to give you guys examples of previous budgets in 18, we had a total revenue of a little over $2 million. The same in 2020. 2022 was 2.9. 24 actual is in the 2.3 area. And so by. Lowering ourselves in this award period to 1.2. Gives us plenty of breathing room, yet still. Puts money out there to promote ourselves. To help bring people into town. Any other discussion on on budget? I guess we can just break into some roundtable discussing the different. Applications that we received, like I don't have them in any particular order. So bear with me as we jump through them. I just go ahead. Okay, there we go. All right, well. The first one is Hogwild. Oh, I didn't, I didn't make, I didn't make it a harder ones are all the convention center thing. So this is easy one.
Now to clarify, this is just a discussion like we did last year so that.
Just wide open, talked through it all.
And then they'll come back with if we need them to.
Yeah, so. So we'll get through this meeting. We'll have open conversations, maybe take some notes about things we need to talk about or want to talk about and then. We can have our second meeting. Make decisions on. Who we award and but also this meeting, who do we need to bring back to explain more to us? If their applications were self explanatory on the surface. Sorry, trying to find hog wild. Okay. So Hogwild, they're asking for 15,000. My first question, George, last year. You asked for 10. Talk to us about why the difference.
Well, we're trying to grow it again. Obviously, last year was a little bit of a hit with detours in place and different things like that. And we're trying to get some the bikers and stuff back involved and do some special things with them like some. Packages and different things like that. So that's, that was the reason, maybe a good band the night before with a barbecue or something to get the bikes and everything in town for that extra night. Instead of just that, you know, we're getting them in maybe Saturday night and they're leaving Sunday, which is usually not been the case in the past. We've usually had a Friday, Saturday and then leaving Sunday. So we're trying to give them more things to do.
It looked like. It was a little. We didn't have a. Recap of your event. So we had to go through the. Convention center budget to kind of get an example of. If you were profitable or not profitable in Hogwild. What can you talk to us about last year and your profitability?
Hogwild actually is not really a revenue generator. It's pretty much. Bring the bands in, they're outdoors, so there's no revenue on that. So it's pretty much a break even. And it requiring the LTAC funds definitely. Rest of it's pretty self sufficient with vendors and different things like that. But I do have it here as far as.
Okay, I just found my notes. So it was about 2,000 bucks upside down last year.
And also what that doesn't include and it can't include because it's not expended out of that fund. In our current payroll system, which going forward it would be is the public work. So it said, it shows you a 2,000. Upside down just on operating, but that does not include the public work staff that's required to come in on the weekends and work. So that's not.
They truly are above their normal.
Okay. Has have you, do you actually have numbers of how many people are coming? It seems to me it's a diminishing event.
Well, I think this year it actually did. You know, I don't know that. The year before, I mean, we had a great bike parade. This year I think it was down. Like I said, but we got a lot of negative feedback as far as the detour. I meant like the Mike parade, everything else. Nobody wanted to come out and go back to Hope we had to take a detour to come back out. So I meant we just. I think we had a, it was a challenging year for that. So. We did get Monster involved now. So we're getting some higher bigger players at the. In the game. So hopefully we can get some more sponsorship. And be able to grow it again. Yes.
If I can make a suggestion, if you want to grow it, I really, and I've said this before, and I implore you to maybe take this clip and have Frank listen to it or whatever, but. You guys need to take a visit to Laughlin and see how they do it. And just the sponsorship there. I mean, you could at least spend the weekend. It's the last weekend of April. Laughlin's not a super expensive trip for the city. And you could go try and procure other professionals to help you with this event. I really, I think. You know. When we came to town, everyone was talking about this event and I really in my mind had it. Like. I really envisioned something different than what it is, and I'm not trying to take away from it by far. But like, if you compare the two, that is like Disneyland and we're Carnival. And we need to figure out how to be more like Disneyland, because if you really want to grow the event, you need to see like what. What sponsors they have and how they're, you know, I just think that it's worth the, you know, maybe a couple thousand dollars that it might cost the city to go actually research a huge event like this so that. Take from it and grow ours if it's something we want to grow. I agree with you. I think the traffic was down last year. It's not my favorite event being in the middle of July. But it is the only time that it's really actually safe for the bikers. So I understand that. But I really, if we're going to try and spend money on this event, I think we need to invest in educating ourselves and. I, I really think that would go a long way for you to see the kind of sponsorship and the collaboration they have because. Every hotel there does something and, and we don't have the capabilities of being full scale like they do. But just sponsorship wise, maybe seeing some of the major players in that market. And seeing how to get them to come someplace else too, you know, talking to people. I think that would go a long way for you. It's my suggestion. I do like the fact that, you know, it does. Always put heads and beds. They books. Especially for this event and you cannot argue that. So I will say I like that. But I really think we need to try and take it to the next level.
I will go with you.
You.
Did have an annual, I would offer your guide.
All very helpful. What's your experience down there?
Well, I just, it's, it's gotten a lot slower. I remember back in the day, it used to just be a massive event. And I just see it diminishing every, that's why I asked the question. You know, we're. We do get some heads and beds to Shannon's point, but. I do think that. In personal opinion, that the mystique of, of Harleys and all that stuff is diminished and it's not the same. Demographic that it used to be and, and just, it's just different. But as is the adjustment of time.
You know, just if I can respond to that really quick. When I first came to Ocean Shores, one of the biggest things I heard was how nobody wanted Hogwell to even be here. It was horrible. There were barroom bites or all the other different things that nobody wanted. So now we're trying to build it based off of something totally different. Right. And so you're right. It's a different demographic because now we don't have the barroom brawls and the. So I meant, we're trying to, we're trying to grow it, but we're, we're working with a different crowd. So that makes it a little challenging. So I just wanted to make sure I put that out there.
All right, I get it, but the whole biker crowd's different than it used to be. So that was my point. Okay.
I like your idea about sponsorships. I think you had Northwest Harley down here, but. To have the actual motorcycle shops and there's probably, I don't know, maybe three or four of them in Seattle at best. I don't think this is anybody's specific territory.
It would be Northwest Harley's specific territory and they're very territorial.
Okay, so they won't allow the other folks.
Get into that, it becomes, yes. Very territorial, but we do have other, like we said, Monster was here. We got him here just for a trial run. This last one, they're. They're happy to come back. We're talking with them about sponsorship, which is a big one. We got North Law Tigers Northwest Harley. So we're starting to pull some of the bigger.
I guess too, the Northwest Harley is that territorial, then anything you can talk them into doing to help. Actually really build this event and sponsor it. And if they don't want to, their ability to defer it to another store, which is the same thing auto manufacturers do.
Right. I'll never do it. Anyway, one thing I do think is. I don't know, back in the day, and I've been around Ocean Shores for a minute. We, there were vendors lined up in that back parking lot. I mean, just stacked. There were leather shops, there were tattoo places, there were. Everything you can possibly manage. You could buy helmets, you could buy stickers. And I don't see that anymore, but then I don't know, maybe it's still there.
You know, it's, it's not that it's, it's not there. And I remember what you're talking about while we were running loud generators in the, in the west parking lot and doing things like that. What has happened, what's changed about it was is that now we have indoor vendors, which didn't happen then. That was, that was more live. Music and a charged feed there. So, so I think, I think we have the number of vendors. I just, I don't know that there are these specific vendors we need for that event because we're going out and trying to get those. Some of them after COVID didn't come back, they didn't survive. So, so finding the new ones to replace them are hard. But I do think we have the same amount of vendors that are just positioned differently.
That's one of the reasons I'm suggesting you go to a different market because you're talking about people that like to travel for a business expense. So you have a slew of. Whole new vendors down there that you've, that have never been to Ocean Shores likely. And so you could market to those vendors, hey, come up for the weekend. You know, going from Laughlin, Nevada to the Pacific Northwest is not that big of a stretch. So. You have a whole new captive audience of potential vendors as well because, you know, they're going to write it off as a business expense.
Okay, shall we move on?
Well, the only, and it's not going to be popular opinion, and I've already said it to Shannon and George knows about it too. Could we have more vendors? Absolutely. Can those vendors or do those vendors either? Can they pay the prices for the hotels? Or is there a hotel even available? That is the number one at this one, Sandstone Sawdust. Vendor complaint. And it's not all, you know, some of them are just much bigger, but some of them. Don't want to make the.
I, I have a suggestion on a way around that.
Well, we, so that is what we, we took note of that. And so that was one of the things that we had worked. With the mayor and potentially the school district because it used to be years ago where the North Beach High School would allow on these big, huge event weekends. People to pull their trailers, their whatever into the. Parking lot there and at least make that available for the vendors that come into these events, which might, it's not going to solve everything, but. It was just another idea to make it help because even if there aren't as many vendors, there could absolutely with the space be more, but where do we put all those people?
If you're dry camp, there might be 10 acres in town that could help them too.
But that would be, that would be vendor specific, correct?
We were keeping that very vendor specific, but anyway, sorry, Shannon, that was just not the deal.
Yeah, that's a. Is make specific vendor camping someplace in town or near town that would allow it for that particular weekend and that would resolve that because most.
Let's move on to Sand and Sawdust. There's no further discussion. Looks like it was. Again, we don't have employee costs. But operationally, it was profitable by $5,000 or so. You're asking for the same amount as last year, 25,000. Any discussion there, folks?
I just think this part needs to be grown. That's my only comment of it.
You dropped out, which.
What part?
The sand. I think the sand needs to be more of a focus and I think it needs to be separate than whoever's carving for obvious. Reasons this year.
Moving on Razorclam Festival, asking for 15,000. Last year it was 10. It was also profitable operationally. Before employees at about 6,000 positive. Talk to us about your increased. Request.
The increase was we're trying to do something new with it, like do a chop type event or something like that, a mystery basket type thing, start getting. Getting one of our local Seattle. Celebrities down there, one of the chefs or something to try to add some, a different component to.
Pat, Shannon, any comments on?
I think that would. I think that would be a neat component to it. It would provide entertainment.
Actually good with it.
Associated Arts of Ocean Shores. They are requesting 33,000. May I ask, is this the one that typically is over Labor Day weekend? Okay, so they have moved it. Or proposed to move.
I was having a hard time finding the actual date. So that was my question because isn't the last weekend of August running into Labor Day still?
It is still Labor Day weekend.
It is still Labor Day. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so then they haven't ever listened.
She said August 29th to 31st.
That's Labor Day weekend.
And that is, it's right.
So. I'll just make a comment on it. I don't like it. And I especially don't like that they've not listened to anything that the LTAC has. Tried to guide them on, changing the dates. Tracking their hotels. They didn't ask a single hotel for heads and beds. And if you could claim that there's 7,000 attendees, you could certainly go to the hotels. One of the other applicants that we have did go to hotels and whether or not the hotels tracked it accurately is. Was an issue, but that applicant at least went to the hotels. This applicant. Has been told this multiple times and continues to just disregard it. So for me, it's a big fat no.
So this would be one that would go into the. Category of. Doesn't necessarily add. Multiple heads and beds, but gives people a positive experience. When they're already here in Ocean Shores with activities and, and things like that. But I understand how you can claim that maybe. Heads and beds aren't its biggest attribute.
Well, and it's Labor Day weekend, so it's not.
Yeah, I know, we. We talked a little bit about that and it, it just seemed like there was no way that Tim was going to, to move that, that I understood. We did have the weekend prior. Going into them booking this weekend. But I just feel that weekend prior, bringing the tow truck drivers back to town, which used to be an event that was held in Ocean Shores all the time. So there is no other weekend now at this point.
I mean, a different event, like has anybody else approached?
We could, yeah, we could.
From what council member Hartman saying where these are people asking for LTAC. Have you been approached by anybody else that would like a?
I would. I would have to go back through the, the notes and see. Obviously, that was the first one, the tow truck driver. And I don't believe that they were going to come out and ask for the LTAC. I could be wrong. But well, obviously we couldn't give it to them because we had this event on that weekend. So. So could we book that event that weekend? Yes, I believe we probably could.
I just feel like this is a comeback in March thing. If there's extra money, that's my personal opinion. But we could have, if anyone wants specifics from them. I don't mind listening to them again, but I feel like with the ask, it's a comeback in March or spring thing.
Well, what if we commit to asking their representative? Is it Leslie? To come to our meeting in November. To talk with us and, and explain more and, and. Because I know one of the things that we try to do on some of these events is. Give folks seed money to an event. Can ladder down the investment from LTAC over, over time so that. It helps them get started. But it's not their, their crutch for their. For their income.
You would be going into, I think it would be at least the third year of funding them if we fund anything this year.
Okay. Are you guys good with bringing them back for, for conversation?
Do we, do we have any? Quantifiable metrics to, to what that event actually did besides create an experience for guests that are already here? We know, I mean, how well it was attended. Do we know any of that information?
Just, just what's on their application.
That's, that's my whole point, Pat, is they were specifically told the last time that they needed to go to the hotels and ask for how many heads and beds and they did not do that. And so I actually took. My own counts for them because it was a source of contention for me. And I want to say I sent it to Sarah. I don't remember the exact count, but I want to say they had maybe like. Four vendors booked with us and one actual tourist booked with us for this event. So. I mean, and it was, you know, an average of a couple hundred dollars a night. So. That's the only data that I could speak to, but I know. I personally told them they need to track hotel data and what they were doing is they were clicking because I went to the event. And they're clicking every time someone walks in and out. And from my understanding, they even clipped George.
Wow.
The heck?
So if you're clicking George walking in and out multiple times, how many of the 7,000 is George? I mean, I, I mean, I'm just saying like a clicker in and out of the exits is not the best way of. Quantifying your attendance.
Well, let's bring them back to have a discussion with them. We know it enhances visitor experience. We probably can agree that it doesn't load our hotels. We have spoken of, of diminishing funding over the years as the event ages. But we have helped them get it started. They do a pretty good job at the event, but. You know, they, they need to come back and talk to us.
And perhaps this is relevant for the next go around. I can always also to provide the funding that we have. Given each of the, the. If that's also helpful. Because this, this would have provided you 23, 33,000, 24, 35,000 and. And then this one would be for 25 for 33,000 and that might just be helpful also for all of you and I never considered providing that.
I would appreciate that.
So yeah, like last year, they applied for 49,000. We awarded them 35. And now.
I can even follow up with that in an email.
Okay, let's. Move to the next. Beachcombers Heritage. So this is the float. Is that correct? Okay.
I'd like them to come back. I think it's a good event. It's in the off season. But I think they. Fatically need to understand that they need to track attendance because they don't do that either.
So last year they were awarded 7,500. This year they are asking for 8,500. Any just.
They added the glass float thing, which they're hiding the glass floats and, or putting them out for people to find. And we had a lot of tourists that said that that was super cool. So. I appreciate them trying to enhance their event and it is off season.
Would you like for these folks to come back to talk to us?
I think they need to.
Yes, you would. No, you're okay. Shannon, what's your?
No, I'm okay with them.
You're okay with not bringing them back? You know the vet well enough. You don't have questions. Okay.
Question, but if they're not coming back and we award them anything, they understand that they actually have to provide hotel data.
Yeah, and I think that that is going to be in the updated tourism agreement. That, that all of you will put together better because I think that we've kind of. At least the city hasn't done a good job documentation wise on. Making these people very aware of the expectation. You know, prior to them applying again and then, you know, so I think we could really say you will never be given one red cent again if. You don't follow X, Y, and Z.
And I don't have per se questions for them. I just want everyone to understand the need for tracking their data.
Sure. Okay. I'll push that forward for discussion next meeting. Postal Interpretive Center. In 23, they were awarded 150,000 into 24. They were awarded 110,000. I know discussion was. I know discussions were made. I know discussions were made talking to them also about the stair stepping down and and stopping the dependence on LTAC. For their operations. Uh, this year they're asking for a hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. They also are obviously about enhancing guest experience when people are in Ocean Shores rather than. Filling hotels specifically because people are coming. Ocean Shores just for the C I C. It's an asset to our city.
Sorry, in twenty, like in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, what were they asking for?
Um, up until LTAC was was being requested, so everything previous to twenty three, so twenty two back. Uh, they would get allocated, I believe it was thirty thousand dollars a year in the city's general fund budget.
So up until twenty three, they were somehow functioning on thirty thousand a year. And in twenty three, we jumped it over seventy thousand additionally. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, I I've got data that goes back uh in nineteen, they got a total of sixty five thousand from the city in different. Types of awards, like I'm seeing five thousand dollars that possibly would have been.
That doesn't count. That is their, that's a. That doesn't count. That is for the weather wax mitigation trail. We pay them a five thou there. They take care of that whole trail.
Okay.
So that is an agreement that we've had for history that we pay them five thousand dollars a year. To do all the maintenance and the signs and so on and so.
Okay, so in nineteen, then it was sixty thousand. In twenty, it would have been fifty thousand. In twenty one, it would have been sixty thousand total. In twenty two, sixty thousand total. Twenty three, one fifty. Twenty four. Was the one ten.
I'm just confused on how we went to from sixty and when Jeff Daniels and that council was around, uh, when he was on council. Specifically telling them as a group that they needed to. Down from whatever we were giving them, which was around what sixty thousand, if I'm hearing you correctly. From the time period when Jeff Daniels was around and then we jumped it to a hundred and fifty, I think. You know, I feel for them, but they have uh sixty two thousand dollars alone in salaries that I added up.
Yeah, one seventy five in payroll last year.
Yeah, so I I mean, in the portion of what they're asking for of the hundred and two, I saw. Forty one thousand in salaries for operations and twenty one thousand for salaries and events. And I just feel like it's we have to be less charitable. I I understand that it adds to guest experience and I feel for the new director because I do feel like he is trying to come up with different ways to. Be more inclusive of out of town guests and come up with different programming and stuff, and I don't mind funding some of it. But I think we need to get back into realistic expectations and they need to fully understand that they need to stair step in large steps.
I believe that if I remembering. That the hundred and fifty thousand was when they had a new director that proposed. Uh, LTAC helping them bridge their gap of we're investing in a full time professional. Manager and uh, we need your help. And then uh. I know they reduce it a tad the following year. But it was, it was to, you know, to give them a jump start, I believe. And so. And they were, and they were going to work on fundraising to help, and that kind of didn't really materialize.
Yeah, I think we're on the fourth managerial type turnover that I could count if I am correct, or at least. The third perhaps. So I think that. I mean, that'd be like me coming to LTAC every year and saying like, oh, well, I needed to, you know, like, I mean, at some point. You have to do less, I think.
Yeah, what uh, what are your two gentlemen's experience? Or opinions?
I think Coastal Interpret's Interpretive Center is important. Um, I don't necessarily. Think that they figured out how to fund themselves. You know, I I don't think we cut them off at the knees because if we did and say, I don't get anything, I think they would know they'd cease to cease to exist. So somewhere there's got to be a compromise. I don't know what that is. I don't know how solvent that they can make themselves. Um, with a little tough love, but I do think probably have to have a little tough love with them.
Do you feel that we should invite their executive director to our next meeting to to speak to us?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
That's two yeses here. Okay, three yeses. All right. So we will ask them to attend.
I don't think they should be cut off at their knees. And in fairness to their executive director, I think he needs to have at least one more year, not at a hundred and two thousand. But one more year to try and really understand and make it a go. For himself because I think he was put in a really bad position because I am sure he didn't take that job knowing that. They're reliant on the city saying yes to them all the time. And I think that's a very unfair position to be in.
How long has he been, how how long has he been in that position?
Less than a year.
So maybe what we do is fund his salary and let let him figure out the rest.
Uh. That will be up for discussion next meeting, I think. When we get the.
Sorry, getting ahead of myself.
Well, yeah, when you actually look at the uh, at what his salary is.
Yeah, it's buried, so I'm sure he has to probably explain that.
All right, we're on to Defenders of the Coast.
I don't need them to come back because I know what they're asking for. I think it enhances the city greatly. Um, it would just be whether, in my opinion, it would just be whether or not we have the. Extra funds that we feel it's important enough to do. I will say that I think.
Are we talking about Defenders of the Coast or C I C?
Defenders of the.
Defenders, okay.
Uh, I think that there was a substantial difference when I came to town uh this summer, um, later in the summer. Uh, it was a lot cleaner and I know that that stems from that group. Um, and more city maintenance. And so I'm appreciative of what they've been doing. It's just, I think it adds to the guest experience. So I think it's in one of those piles where we may not need them to come back, but. If we decide that we have enough money, we want to give them something.
So I believe in uh Facebook or excuse me, uh, an internet fundraiser for themselves too. Do you know more about uh Mr. Ripley and Defenders of the Coast?
Um, I, they've helped on a couple of our events and stuff also, and I agree with Shannon on that. I think they do a great job as far as the cleanup and stuff. But I think we do need to look at whatever it is, we can give them the help with that because it does make make our guest experience a lot better. I don't know. Like I said, what what that would be, but I I don't know that we we need to. I don't need to have any questions answered from them. So I bet I think I would move forward unless they were around.
So under, you know. Operations, two thousand dollars for licensing, registration fees, office supplies, postage and equipment.
I'm not saying the whole amount. How much do they have?
Go ahead.
I don't have the applications with me. How much do they have? I think they had a line item if I remember correctly for bags specifically.
Twenty seven fifty.
There we go.
Yeah, so I mean.
Bravel fuel oils. Supplies.
Aren't they a nonprofit yet?
Yeah.
So they did get their nonprofit service open.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll uh. Okay, so I'm hearing no need to bring them back and we'll make some decisions next meeting. Does that sound right to you?
Yes, right.
All right. Graves Harbor Youth Athletics. They are asking for ten thousand dollars. Uh, that's their golf tournament. I'm sure you hotel. Operators. Know that pretty much everybody's got a head in bed that comes to this event since they're all from out of town. What do you want to say about this event?
She did contract with the hotels, so she did what we requested of her to do.
I know that at registration, they, you know, even asked me.
Yeah.
They find me out. They always provide all of their paperwork. They always are the easiest to work with. Um, and it, given that we've been to that event, I've dealt with these individuals. Um, this, what they ask for, and I know it's time over time and what you're trying to get away from. But this is a drop in the bucket in comparison to what they're actually putting out for this event for. All the kids that they have, the golf tournament. Um, and I just go back to the documents because LTAC has been a hard thing to take on. Making sure everything's compliant and and what everybody wants and uh. Mary Ladue had and Dana with Graves Harbor Youth Athletics have been. The easiest and streamlined the system. They listen to everything. Just to add that little bit in there.
I think we all agree that this is.
Okay, so we don't need to have them come back, but we'll make decisions next meeting on funding.
Yep.
Okay. North Beach Community TV.
So when I talked to Mary, our question on that was how you're driving people to this streaming site. And then when I was looking at the request, they have like, if I was looking correct, twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety six dollars in software and hardware, which would be equipment that they get to keep. And then six thousand dollars in salary and benefits. And. So I just. I'm having a hard time with it because I don't know how you're driving tourists or how it's impacting tourism to the level that. Or how someone even knows to go there to stream whatever it is they're producing.
Well, we we already know. In our businesses that you can have the best. Experience online of anybody, but unless you're pushing. People to the site, it just sits there and does nothing. Uh, I appreciate North Beach TV and the things they do. Looks like in twenty three, they were awarded twenty five hundred dollars. I'm not sure what that particular award was for. But again, we're looking for how can we justify a head in a bed or can we justify a guest experience? Uh, in in enhanced because of what we're funding here today. So can you guys help me with? Guest experience at least. Can you, is there any?
I.
Throw me something here.
I got nothing. So I mean, I've never had anybody come up to me and say, hey, I'm so glad that we have this TV. Most people don't even know about it, so. Uh, to me, I. It doesn't do anything for me. Or us.
George, what's your take on on things like this that are kind of?
Yeah, you know, with me, I know that uh. They tried to get me to use them quite a bit at Convention Center for marketing and and pushing stuff out there, and I just don't see. And being able to do that, um, you know, as opposed to a bigger player, so. I don't, I mean, I know they're great for the city events and different things like that, but I just don't know that they have anybody really listening to that.
Do you see how they're enhancing a guest experience that they're?
I do not.
Okay. Uh, Shannon, uh. Anything, anything else? On North Beach?
No, I mean, eh, the guest experience when you're in Ocean Shores is hopefully not watching a TV. Because if you're in a room watching a TV, then hopefully the weather's just awful and you can't be outside. And so, I mean, I just.
Rangers more.
May I ask a question? Uh. Sorry, I don't spend nights in your establishments. Uh, I have, I have coworkers that do. But do we have, i- is it universal? Does everybody have coast cable and are all the hotel rooms uh have channel sixty seven, I believe?
We don't. So it wouldn't even be applicable to us.
What about your establishment?
We, everything's streaming. We don't.
Everything's streaming, yeah. So they don't, so they're potentially even hotel rooms don't have them.
Correct. I mean, it depends on who they're up with, like. For instance, um, I don't. If Pat has streaming, that's awesome, but like we don't allow our TVs to stream at all because of the. What we're able to get from coast as far as internet to begin with, because with our hotel, it. The more people you have connected on devices, the more it bogs it down. So like our TVs are restricted from even being able to stream anything. And so we just use DirecTV. It would be something that we wouldn't even have access to, and every hotel is different. So. I would think that some of the hotels have have cable, like I'm guessing maybe Shiloh based on the TVs that they still have in their rooms, but I'm not sure.
And in in transparency.
Bet that would love.
Uh, community TV, they did receive twenty thousand. For upgrades to the things from ARPA funding in that pocket of uh fifty thousand that was allocated for nonprofits. So in in April of twenty.
Twenty four.
Four, they did receive twenty thousand dollars. So just, and I obviously am biased because I think they're great because they do the council and stuff like that, but.
Oh, they're wonderful people.
You guys are talking about and the twenty thou, just so you knew, they had that pocket of money. They didn't get LTAC necessarily in a huge way, but they got that.
You know, you can't diminish their value to our city. It's just. This particular meeting is about enhancing experiences or putting heads in beds. Unfortunately. All right, let's move on.
Is that a mask to them to come or no?
I'm hearing no one asks for them to come to present?
No.
Okay, no, we'll just make decisions next meeting on funding. Uh, Ocean Shores Marketing Coalition.
I think that just goes right to presentation. It just, I don't think we have enough information here of what they've done, what their game plan is going forward. Um, how they're going to strategically, and I believe that they need to come and. Sell us on it.
I agree with Pat, and I might be biased because I helped them put it together, the original presentation, but this one I really had a hard time figuring out. For instance. There's a TV portion of the budget, but it's not giving me any visuals or any that I could see. Um, there was a lot of analytics for social media posts that they've done, but I want to know. Where the dollars of the three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars would be spent on actual TV ads or Pandora or Spotify or things like that, not just. Facebook posts.
It'd be nice if they could bring that marketing company that they're in bed with to the presentation as well. So we can hear from them as well.
I agree. Because that's a huge number and I mean.
Well, it's it's a huge number, but it isn't if it works. Because I mean, it is, it's a concerted effort, all in going towards bringing people to Ocean Shores, and that is. The whole point of this thing is to bring people to Ocean Shores and ultimately put them in beds and I. Done right, I'm not sure that is or isn't, but I think if it is done right, it could be huge for Ocean Shores.
Agree a hundred percent. It's like, but where I was going is it's a huge number if it's not done right.
Correct, yeah, I agree. If I saw. Broadcast media budget that was ready to go with an actual. Spot that went with it. Three hundred thousand dollars is. An honest budget during shoulder season to push Ocean Shores. Uh, that's a great suggestion that they bring their uh people with them. So let's ask them to attend uh with the caveat of they need to bring their uh ad agency. Uh, good news, visit ocean shores dot com is live as of today. I'm not going to tell you it's uh perfect. Uh. But it's up and so. Congratulations. I know they are working on immediate changes and updates to the site as of this morning. Rogue Attractions Rogue Wrestling. This gentleman did talk to us last year. I would like to hear from George how things, h- how the experience went with. The the meets last year and how. You feel about this year and what they've committed to.
Yeah, you know, I don't know that, uh, I don't know what he did as far as heads and beds or hotels go, but I know that he's worked. Hard to get it towards that, and he has increased his attendance. Um. By quite a bit. Um, I know that it is growing and the fact that he is attempting to have a three day event in the off season is. Isn't positive, but where I'm having my issue with them is a lot of these now that are depending on LTAC. They don't want to, they don't want any skin in the game until they get money from. They don't wanna, they don't want any skin in the game until they get money from LTAC, so tech, technically, he's on our calendar, but has no signed contract. Because there's no deposits or anything, so I, then I think, um, I think it, it's a good event and I think it'll work, but I think somehow. We have to get away from, okay, well, we want to book your building and I don't book it out for somebody else. I mean, you have to make a deposit and have those get in the game, and I think that's, and that's where we're at in this situation right now is. We can't get a contract out of it because he's one hundred percent waiting. To see if he gets his money here.
So it's the cart and the horse, yeah, yeah.
And I don't think that's the way we should be doing business, so.
But without the money, he can't do it.
Well, he, he's done it in the past, not a three-day, um, but he's done it in the past, so I meant. He's had several events before he ever even came to LTAC and asked for money, so I meant, there's gotta be some funding coming from somewhere.
What would be the deposit?
Should it be all three days?
Like what would, I mean. He's waiting for twenty-seven thousand dollars, what would have been the deposit for him to just put a deposit?
I have to look at the contract, I think, and I, I don't want to quote any numbers right this, but it's usually fifty percent of what the rental is. Um, when you sign that contract and that's, and we've just started enforcing that, and I think that is where. You know, honestly, this wouldn't have been an issue two years ago because he could have just signed the contract and waited till thirty days before the event. Um, but now we're starting to hold true with the non-refunds deposits and stuff, so, so. I, I don't know, if I'm looking at the main hall and that's all he technically uses, um. I want to say it's probably two grand or less, I mean, it's not like it's a huge amount of money, so that's why I have an issue with him not being here.
Heard about.
Yes.
Create, yes.
Well, that's why I have questions for him even more now because. For instance, it is on February, which is good, I'll give him that, but he has three thousand dollars in his budget to an event planner. I, I would think he's the event planner, so that's.
Hundred percent is the event planner.
He only has fifteen hundred dollars in marketing. If I read their statement correct of what they provided, they have sixteen thousand dollars left in income. So there should be no reason he couldn't put a deposit down, and just like George said, there's no, um. With these events, there's no skin in the game for them, they're not, some of them are not asking for, you know, like, I'm gonna use, uh. George's as, as an example. Um, Razorclam is asking for fifteen thousand dollars, but their budget is thirty-six thousand. You know, so eh, there's at least. I, I just feel like when you're asking for a hundred percent funding, then George might as well be putting on the event. So I do have questions for the gentleman. If we want to consider it.
So shall we ask him back to, to speak with us?
Yes. Yep, I would say yes.
I, I appreciate that he. He, he was a pleasant person, he took our lead, he, he, he realized that we don't just want to give him a. A one day and ruin our whole weekend for our ability to rent it, so he stepped up there, but what he failed to do was just really go all in and do it.
Right.
You know, this is a learning process for everybody, they've been looking at LTAC as, you know, they're. Yeah. Yeah. No offense, we've trained them.
It is.
All right, we'll have Ask Kids attend.
But the money tree is in a drought and they need to re- realize that.
It's wilting.
Yeah, it may not get as much water this next year, so we need.
Leaves just falling off.
Not a question about that, you're absolutely correct, absolutely correct. Uh, Stage West Theater.
This is specifically for wearable arts, I believe.
It's not, it's for a summer camp also.
Oh, so different.
I reread it this morning, she used a combined application for both of them, so part of it. I think thirty-seven hundred of the ask is for wearable arts, I ignored the summer camp portion because I wasn't in favor of that. Because it doesn't deal with any, it's for community children, that it's not for anyone out of town, um. So the, and the thirty-seven hundred for the wearable arts. Nineteen hundred of it was for the Convention Center, a thousand of it was for travel for the artists and four hundred dollars in supplies.
So.
I have a comment on it.
Educate me, yeah, go ahead, I was gonna say educate me on. I don't recall wearable arts asking for money in the past.
They have not, the whole eight years that I've been involved in Ocean Shores, they put it on once a year, it's widely attended by the community. Um, it's, it's a cool show, I've been to it myself, um, they usually sell out their tickets to most of the community. Um, so the, uh, uh. The ask on it, you know, is low, but I feel like if you're gonna ask for any money, you need to be projecting. How you're going to do it so that you're reaching other people to book hotel rooms versus paying for artist participation. Because somehow for the last eight years, you've been doing that anyways, so. I kind of, I, I like it, I think that it could put heads in beds, it's actually a very cool show, but the. Budgeting part of it, I'm struggling with.
George, do you have any insight for us?
Yeah, just a little bit, um. When I took over, um, this event. Was on a Saturday night, um, they actually took possession of the building. Uh, like a Tuesday, so they basically removed stuff in on Tuesday, they were there Wednesday, Thursday, rehearsal on Friday. And the show on Saturday and getting charged for one day. Um, so now they're starting to get charged for more, we didn't, we didn't go and just say, okay. You're paying for every day you're here, we started doing it fifty percent each, each time they were here, so there. Fee is increasing for the building, so that may be why. They're starting to come and ask for this, so.
It's George's fault, isn't it?
It's my fault, I did it.
Well, the good news is the convention center still gets the money, right?
So that's a what?
Two thousand dollars less we have to fund for chairs?
There, there you go.
But this is.
Get it out later.
This is a prime example, this is a prime example of event that is using convention spotters, is convention center space in prime season. That could occur any time of the year, because it's directly marketed to mostly residents. And mostly the surrounding area, so. Not to pick the event apart, because I really like what they do. Why not have it in the off-season where A, your hotel rooms for your artists aren't gonna be that much? And B, you know, you could actually maybe pull other people other than locals, but like, it's, if I remember correct, it's in June. Right?
And I'm having a hard time seeing what date in June.
I want to say it's like the end of June sometime, because it's, I think if I remember right, it's usually after high school graduation. But that aside, to my point is, I don't think. You know, I had a lady that came from Alaska one year from it, but it happened to be that she was the nurse protect, practitioner for C Mar. And she attended it the couple of years that she worked for C Mar, so she just happened to come back for it another year because she liked it so much, but. I wouldn't say it's driving hotels, so eh, I, I mean, I have some. If we're gonna fund it, I definitely have questions on it.
It's the first full weekend of June, yes.
I was wrong, it's before graduation.
Hmm, I don't know how busy we'd actually be then, honestly, as we really start hitting it once graduation happens.
That's correct, I, I was thinking for some reason it was later in June. But I would still say the rates in the beginning of June for anyone is a little bit higher than maybe like.
Sure.
February.
Yeah, no doubt.
So it comes down to, once again, is it putting a head in bed, is it, is it, uh? Increasing a guest experience in town? Uh.
I think it definitely increases guest experience, I don't know necessarily that it puts a lot of heads in beds. But it definitely is something people go to if they happen to be here. And it's cool.
That's the key, if they happen to be here, so I think we would need to talk to her more, because if they're getting money to cover the Convention Center. They really need to market it to out-of-town guests more than the locals, because the locals chew up a lot of the tickets and then you can't sell it to any of the people. That are coming in that don't know about it, you know?
Okay. We wanted me to do a presentation? Or is it worth it?
It's a small amount, I don't mind talking to her about it, um.
Want to just do that one-on-one, or do you want her to come in and do a full-blown presentation to us?
Up to you guys.
You know, looking at the application, this is where it's. I'm not embarrassed with real numbers, I'm embarrassed with exaggerated numbers. I'm ignorant, you would know, you hoteliers would know better, but they're saying they have a hundred overnight stays because of the wearable art show. In hotels.
George, do you remember how many people went down a, a runway, if you could guesstimate?
Um, I want to say. Fifteen maybe, seventeen, somewhere in that area.
Yeah, I would say that's exaggerated.
Yeah, um, and it may be a few last, but.
Yeah, it's probably an exagger. Ah, again, no one's coming to hotels to ask us to count for them, so I wouldn't know how you come up with that. Unless you're eh, doing ticket sales, which that data wasn't provided either.
Those are showing historic numbers, right?
All right, so we want them to attend the next meeting and make, and, and answer our questions, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
If you guys feel it's worthwhile, yes. I mean.
It's up to you two then, what?
I don't, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, I think if Shannon has a conversation with them, yeah, I think that's enough.
Yeah.
So it's on you, Shannon.
All right. Two cool sports. Which would be Queen Shores, correct?
Correct.
Like them, I don't have a problem with it, the only thing that I noticed on it that I think he needs to tweak, and this would be my commentary if we ask him to come in. Is that he has eleven thousand five hundred in radio and part of that lists Aberdeen and Ocean Shores, and I really feel like that reach. Needs to be like further than Aberdeen and Ocean Shores, so I would like to see the money that is being used in the radio. More towards Pandora and Spotify that go out to larger markets. So that would be my only issue with the application that I found is that. Like Aberdeen and Ocean Shores is not gonna put a head in a bed and pretty much everyone in Ocean Shores already knows about the event, so. That would just be my comment for Joe, not anything to nitpick his event, I, seems like every year grows, so I don't have a problem with it and it's off-season.
The city also does market just for ocean, you know what I mean, like what she's saying, they could put those funds elsewhere because. We're getting all of the Aberdeen and Ocean Shores people, I assure you.
Yeah, it's one of those touchy subjects of, you're already bringing in. You're not bringing in four thousand people, sorry. But you are bringing in a lot of Jeeps. And they're already from out of town, they're already spending the night, one or two nights at least.
I would say easily bringing in four thousand.
Right, yeah, I, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
More people, yes.
He ran a ticker and. Well over four thousand Jeeps.
It's insane.
Four thousand Jeeps, or four thousand people.
Wait, I mean, there's four people, three people in each one of those vehicles and.
We counted the Jeeps last year.
Yeah.
And it was like almost two thousand Jeeps and there was. Way more than two per Jeep, guarantee it.
Okay.
And then there's people that just come out to watch it all.
Right.
Which is pretty insane, so I'm guessing we're way north of two, four thousand.
So you're already filling the hotels with just the Jeep people?
Yes.
So your marketing is.
Well, your marketing is.
You're already full.
No, you're not.
Well, not necessarily, because I mean, if this is March. If it wasn't for this thing on that weekend, we'd be dead.
Right.
So does it fill us full? No.
But I mean, when you were talking about ask him to put his radio advertising into a different bucket. Out of town, but you're already, the town's already.
Well, I mean. We had non-Jeep people also booking that weekend, so I would say he has further reach that he could go, you know? And also. And maybe different demographic that he could pull into, because the one thing I will say is like, um. I got a lot of like. People that thought that the hotel room should just be like. Nothing for them almost, because you know, hey, they're here supporting our town. And I kept getting arguments about like, why our rates are so high, and I had to explain probably six times that like, our rates weren't any higher. The problem is, is when you look at my website, it's giving you a room rate from like the lowest available room, and when that goes away. It's going from other ones, so like, when I sell out of my cheapest room, then it goes up to my studios, which are. You know, my cheapest room might be on that weekend eighty dollars a night and my studio thirty a night, like, I only have one of those rooms. And so, you know, the, a lot of people were camping and doing other things other than staying in hotels. So I think that there's more of an area where he could reach out to more people, um, and grow it further.
Okay.
I don't know that that requires a presentation, but I am, maybe just a conversation.
Yeah. Well, there's no question, he, uh. That group fills this town on a. On a wet weekend, easily.
For, for five day, or excuse me, three days.
Absolutely.
Sometimes four, so this is my comment to, as a comparison to Hogwild, this one is just going up and up and up.
Yeah.
And Hogwild's kind of on the downward trend, just because of the demographic, so. That's, that's why I think this one's absolutely a homework.
All right, so we have Associated Arts, CIC, Marketing Coalition, West. Fabricating Company and Rogue Attractions all. Being asked to come back to our next meeting on, is it the fifteenth of November?
I think, well.
Yeah, I can actually look.
That's a Friday.
No, no, it's a Wednesday.
It's November like.
On the Friday.
You are correct, thirteenth at three P M.
Okay.
All right, so we are to, uh, Convention Center, uh. It just, or either want to be able to just quickly talk about the bond subsidy that's fifty thousand dollars and it's been fifty thousand dollars forever.
Um, because there is some, and, and. I'm happy to find out more information, please give me grace, there is something about that fund that we're required to keep X amount. Fifty thousand in after we make the payment, so we, we allocate the payment amount. And then this is where this historically from putting all this together, this fifty thousand from LTAC. Because it has to do with the Convention Center's bond, just gets put as the base, whatever. I hope. That really professional, um. You know.
Worked for me.
Okay, good.
Uh, Convention Center Improvements. Uh, replacing reader board and upright. Replacement of banquet chairs. Main parking lot, electrical and power HVAC units.
So there are some caveats with this that will just. So. We have, we presented to council, these are the requests outside of the operational budget, and it lists these things. And George actually had a few other things, but they were still within his budget, um, to just do those things this year. So he purchased those things this year and, and took those off the list. These have been presented to council as these are outside the operational budget, will you take a peek at them? There's also an added point, we come to LTAC because we don't know the council's decision yet, and we don't know the LTAC's decision yet. There was, um, and the dollar amount is what we don't have yet. Because so much money was put away from the soft bits, because the bid kept going up and up and up and up over the course of years of it not getting done. That there is a cost savings between what this bid was and, um. What we had allocated for the soft bits, so our intention before any decision is made by. LTAC or by the council on these is to see how many things we can absorb. Specifically with that leftover money that will still remain in the capital for the Convention Center. So just, just knowing that we're trying all of the ways to do that before this whole. So just, just knowing that we're trying all of the ways to do that before this whole. Four hundred and sixty-six thousand is being asked for, but these are the answers we didn't have before we had to go to council with preliminary requests and to L TAC.
Any idea what the timing is for to know exactly what?
I feel like it could be within the next. But it's tough, they're having. They're having some issues with the contractor uh at the moment, so they can't give a definitive. Like this is the dollar amount. And I, and and here's the thing, even if they never can, but we could get a ballpark, we can work with a ballpark um which. Whatever. It is, say by the thirteenth will just have to be what it is.
I'm just curious on your banquet chairs, how many chairs you buying?
Thousand.
A hundred bucks a piece?
Yes.
And just, just to put on some information with that, I know that Shannon did send me some information of a place to get some. And I don't know Shannon, I looked for some of the. The stuff on them myself and couldn't find it, maybe I just looked in the wrong place. But I don't know how those chairs could actually be warranted. Um, do you have any ideal on that? We're, I'm talking a chair that's got a twelve year warranty as opposed to being shipped in the. So could you?
I have to ask.
Yeah, you may have a better, and you know, there's a lot of things that can get cheaper chairs, but we're talking three hundred pound weight limits as opposed to three hundred pound weight limits. So, and I'm not, hey.
Not picking on me.
Let me ask you this, how often do you use a thousand chairs? Um, quite, uh, several times. It just depends on the group. We could have a group in the main hall that has. Five hundred people in it and then have another three or four hundred chairs and breakout rooms because they're doing classrooms.
So could this be phased in over years like?
I, half of them this year, half of them next year. I wouldn't want to look like a. You know, that flea market, and then I just don't know if that's the best look to have, I mean. If we're like trying to look professional and and attract these groups in here, I think we need to be professional and that would be.
Was that just the low bid you had, or did you have multiple bids?
I did go multiple bids. I even went as far as to get the same exact chair that was in the Convention Center at almost two hundred dollars a piece. So I didn't covet anybody with with high bid by any means. I just used the moderate one.
So if you send me the chair specifications of exactly, because it was really hard to read in the PDF, I could like the weight. Uh, if you have this metal gauge color, like anything you have on the chair. And the warranty and everything, I could ask how they compare um. I've bought plenty of things overseas and typically don't have issues with, you know, having to replace them or them not lasting. So I'll use an example, um, when we had to do drapery for the hotel. Um. To drape a room in blackout drapes, I was uh at like probably four thousand a room. I did my entire hotel for under three thousand from overseas. So it just depends on the vendor and that kind of stuff. Um, obviously there's a slight risk in it, but it's like a seventy thousand dollar difference also to you guys, so. There's.
Correct. Yeah, and the only thing that I'm looking at is, is like I said, if we get them and they last three years as opposed to what the ones we have now have lasted twenty. Then we're gonna eat up, we're gonna eat up that amount anyway, so that's why I'm trying to figure out what is the best direction to go, but.
Uh, I guess one of the ways.
If I get the specifications and all that, I could clarify.
Uh, I'll get you a cleaner copy of that.
Okay.
One of the things that we did last year was we funded five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for repairs and maintenance. Reserve. Uh, we don't really know where we're at with that five forty-five that was given. And so it'd be great to know. If we spent it like. So before awarded more money, what, how do we do with last year's five hundred and forty-five thousand?
I'm almost certain all of it's been used, but I can just send all of you a project breakdown of the requests that were. Given and where they send.
Heard is, yeah. Um, okay, she talked about banquet chairs. Parking lot electrical, I've I've heard you speak of trying to get electrical in a. Go ahead, you should probably just tell us.
Yeah, what we're, what we're finding is in the parking lot, um, like, like Pat had mentioned earlier, it used to be in the past, we would have generators and everything else running in the parking lot for these events that are loud, they're noisy, they're distracting. Um, so we've started to find with like sand and sawdust, um, that we just do not have enough electrical in the parking lot. Um, to accommodate everybody that's there in a safe manner. We're running extension cords, taping them to the ground, we're running, you know. Covers and stuff like that, so we just want to surround the parking lot. So we, we have a lot easier access to electrical for all the different vendors and the carvers and and in this sense true in other events also, but. It's just not positioned, it's it's positioned on the east and west end of the parking lot and that's the only place we have power. In the parking lot, so it needs to surround it.
And you're only speaking of the parking lot that's on the south side of the convention center.
Correct.
Do you have plans on trying to electrify the west side?
Uh, the, we have got a couple out there now, which was part of a project a couple of years ago, but there are a couple out there now, but. Typically, if we put, here's, here's one of the issues, and I know that we have the lot that we're able to use now, but. Um, if we tried to go back to anything like in the past where we had a parking. We had vendors in both parking lots, we had no parking. I meant, we're, we're writing tickets, we're already, I meant, and it's not good for, it's like, welcome to Ocean Shores, here's a parking ticket because we didn't give you anywhere to park.
Yeah.
So putting electrical out there, I mean. Would be great, but then if we eat that up with vendors, then what do we do for parking?
Uh, reader board. Eighty thousand dollars.
Which on, on the eighty thousand dollar price, after looking into stuff, um, that was the, the double sided board. Uh, the uprights on that right now, the frame is rusted through, you can go out and stick a screw through it, I mean, I think I did show you a little bit of that, or we, we talked about it, and then I was gonna go out and show you, and I don't know if we ever got to. Um, I don't know, um, the design of the sign and everything is in the presentation there, but. It, it just needs to be done. I mean, it's a company that actually. Made the sign, it's not in business any longer, the software is antiquated. If we were to lose any part of that sign, it's gonna be down completely.
So. Talk to me about. How you use it? I mean, what if it just wasn't there any longer? What, what, how does that affect you? If that was one of your choices. Of just not having a sign.
Well, I bet. Obviously, it's the main Convention Center sign, so it lets you know that the Convention Center's there when you're going by, and then obviously you can see the big building. But we do, we do put all of our city events on there, we put all of our events that are coming into town there. Welcome, you know, whoever it may be, so I mean, I think it's an important thing to have, but. If it weren't there, I don't, I, I don't know.
I. Can I ask a question? If it's being used for city events? Or like city. Announcements, can the city share the cost of it?
That would be a you question.
Will that be a council?
That would be a rich question.
Well, yeah, the answer obviously is sure. But uh. You know, your council budget, although I'm one of seven. Uh. Every single nickel's already spent. We have something called deferred maintenance on every single. Building in this town, so. It's just a matter of priorities, right?
Right.
Uh, with this new sign, are you? Because your other one is old. Is this one substantially larger? So you can get more than uh two words on it?
Yes.
On a line. Size are you looking at?
And it's, it should be on that.
It's just the.
Yeah, and you know.
Which is, could have had all the specs on it, so it should have had the specs on it. No, we just put the quote on there and not the rest of it.
Right.
And we could follow up with.
Yeah, I would have.
I'm just curious this.
And I could, I could email it.
Well, and I'll say like you also have to look at dots per inch and clarity and things like that, because for instance, I don't know when the Shiloh sign was um. Redone versus our sign that I inherited, but like. Their graphics get up on theirs is much better than mine, for instance, and.
Yeah, and the company that actually quoted what I thought, like I said, was the lowest price that I had seen. Uh, is actually the one that did the one for the library too, so.
So I'll notice that the library one doesn't have their uh. I'm sorry, I don't know the terminology for signs, but their. Their diodes are fairly far apart from each other. It's not as, it's not as clear unless you're far back.
Pixels.
Yeah, sorry, less pixels versus more pixels. I noticed that yesterday just driving by that. You know, looks really great from afar.
So George, I have to ask you, if you had. Any of these things. If we don't have enough to fund them all. How would you prioritize them? Um, I don't think we've talked about all of them yet, correct?
For.
How we saw the.
Well, we have HVAC, which I thought we'd already done, but.
And then we look at the carpet part of it.
Somebody says you have more HVACs that are added.
We not put that carpet part in there?
Carpet was last year.
It was last year.
Well. No, we didn't put it.
They put it down off it. Um. Prioritize. I think the electrical for the events outside is important. Um, obviously. We want to get the chairs because we don't have enough that are max capacity right now. Um, and quite a few of her in service now that are beyond repair, um. Okay. So I would go with carpet. And then obviously. Reader board. No, what? Reader board or HVAC? Well, HVAC is, is a comfortable comfort thing for clients. I mean, we can't, we can't run our building without. Heat or air, which we're doing right now, as a matter of fact, because we still don't have that project finished, but.
Well, but, but didn't we already allot money for HVACs?
You did, but you, you allotted for four units or ten rooftop units.
So we have six more bad ones.
They're not necessarily bad now.
But this is trying to make.
What we're trying to.
Deferred maintenance, like. We need to take care of the P, you know, P F D building.
So two thirty-one fixes all the rest of the six.
Should be close, I bet. You know, I can't, I can't give you that number.
That's the estimate that we received from the project manager based on the capital facilities plan and her numbers figured into there.
When was that? When did she estimate it? How old is the estimate?
Oh, no, it's the capital facilities plan that they all just went through and did that the council afforded a hundred thousand for this plan.
This year.
They went through all of the buildings and the infrastructure, and so this was the estimate uh provided by the company that did that.
Okay, so it's about.
So it's an estimate from a professional company, it's not an estimate from an HVAC company.
Right.
So it's a guesstimate.
Oh, yeah.
And it's also not like within the last thirty to sixty days, so.
Correct. Has it, has anybody from a HVAC company gone up and looked at them?
Well, we just had the four um replaced that. Was quite the ordeal.
Oh, and it still is, right?
Still an ordeal.
I, we may be giving money back on a little bit this next week because of this project, so.
The Convention Center was set up with. Some, some other type of heating, something, so everything had to have a. What do you call that? The thing that they're having to install.
Transformer? Oh, no, I, well, short story on the project, when they, they completed the project, Carrier did the startup. Um, all of a sudden, we started to use our heater the first time, had to evacuate the building, fire department meters are screaming. Um, come to find out the company didn't even change from natural gas to propane. Oh, yeah, that'll do it. That'll do it. So that was the first. Problem with it, and we're still running into issue.
Company was this?
A X mechanical, doesn't always mean the lowest bid's the best.
Yeah, I don't know who that is. I'm sure there.
So those are gas, gas heaters up there, okay, wow. Yeah, and that's the reason we wouldn't have known when they, when they did the startup was because we were still using air. So we weren't using that side of it, and then as soon as it was cold in there that morning, we bumped it up. Reused the whole building and it was not pretty then. And you're shooting propane through a natural gas or, but that's never do it. It's not good. Okay.
I'm assuming they're taking care of that because it was their mistake.
Yeah, slowly. So. Are you, are you anticipating like next year coming up with, hey, we need another five hundred to a million to do deferred maintenance, or are we? Getting to a point where we're kind of on top of it? Well, I think as we're doing this, I think we're getting to the point where we're kind of on top of it, but I think that. And correct me if I'm wrong, because it's my first time in the budget process too, but I'm that. Um, I think by asking for what we're asking for, um, it allows us to come back the next time. Needing less, because these are all projected numbers, I don't, they're not good, so. Got it. So you mentioned carpet, is that, did we not address that last year or did we say no?
Guys did the ninety-five thousand, um, they need another forty-five thousand for the install to be done. Quickly, uh, that's being taken care of in this next coming year.
Got it, okay.
Not something we need from you.
Okay. Okay.
All right, well, it takes care of that.
There are still a lot of moving parts, but we just wanted to not come to. L TAC and say, this is everything that we want capital wise. We haven't looked at any other way, because I do feel like sometimes that was done in the past, and so we have brought it to council's attention. We have now brought it to L TAC's attention, and then we'll be working on where we can grab money for maybe projects, which is. Will provide in that project list to try and offset that.
Or sixty-six is worst case.
Or sixty-six is worst case and does need additional research done, like, like.
But that number's not going to go up, you expect it to go down?
Go down.
Okay, no, they don't even have a bid on HVAC.
I'm just putting her on the spot.
No, I'm not putting her on the spot.
What did we pay for the four that were just done?
Was it right around two fifty, I think it was.
So they're estimating in that estimate, which is based off of your guys' capital facilities plan. You know what I mean? That would then go back to council. If you afforded him two thirty-one for the HVAC, they'd have to take care of that from a capital budget level.
So if you're doing four for two fifty. I don't think you can do six for.
But I don't think that was the anticipation to do all six.
No, it, it.
Because it's trying to do with the city and we're dealing with this on other levels, we just dealt with it yesterday with the fire department, what the city has a really bad habit of. Along with deferred maintenance, is with that maintenance on things that are bulk and all the same, we just do nothing or we do it all. Instead of this staggered deal, so I don't think it was the anticipation, and I'll clarify that via email for you. That this was for all six of them. I believe it was something like another three or four, and then we.
Next year will come back.
For two years from now, because it's that staggered, which is what we just. Thought, not fought, but we worked out with the fire department, don't go to council and ask for six hundred thousand dollars when you could get away with. A hundred and fifty that we already have, then stagger and stagger, so that's not for six of them, I'm almost certain, but I will clarify with Becky and. Send it out to all of you guys.
Right, and, and to clarify also, when we talk about what we just spent on them, uh, the one of the units that was replaced was the big unit. Um, so I think it's what thirty ton, so it, it actually makes up for three units.
Okay.
The other ones are like fourteen ton units, so that was the big one that had to be replaced, so that, that drives. Here too, so.
Surpriser. Is the technology such that you need propane rather than electric?
I mean, I guess you could, what do you? That big is over my head, I don't know. Yeah, and that, so I, somebody talked about that, it's like, why don't you put many splits in, I'm like, oh. What many splits, that's. I think just our little convention.
Right now, but surprise, you gotta have a propane tank large enough to actually. Cover you. Okay, so the final. Agenda item is operating budget, um. I will say that twenty-three operating budget request was eight seventeen, twenty-four was six twenty-eight, twenty-five is nine six two. Talk to us about why so much more, even though we think the Convention Center is doing better. And in the past as far as revenue.
Let's see that one first. So on the operating side of it, um, I don't know that we took numbers, I think we just took off of twenty-four, right? Twenty-three, twenty-four and just up.
Twenty-three was eight seventeen, twenty-four was six twenty-eight.
Seventeen, so we upped the number by five percent was the.
No, six twenty-eight was twenty-four.
So we ate twenty, so. We worked on this uh with. So we took revenues and expenditures, and then we took out what we would receive L TAC wise potentially from the events. And what we expended. The last. Twenty twenty three and just as in, uh, twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty four. Just as we did with twenty three, we asked for a higher percentage amount so that in the event that we. Need to come back, it's for far less than we did the previous year. But in all fairness, if you and I'm happy to get the information, our CPA actually asked me to come for one point two million for the operating budget. For the convention center based on all her calculations. So all I did was revenues versus expenditures minus the money received from LTAC for the events. And nine sixty two is what I came up with.
Why is this?
And I did do a whole spreadsheet that I'm also happy to provide you.
Why is the CPM suggesting that you go for one point two versus what you?
Because it doesn't leave our fund balances where she's comfortable with, which is not something we've really. Done in the past, and so since it was our first year, I wasn't willing to. Go down that path the same as her, and we discussed that. I think that it is a little. Weird that we do say, oh, the revenue's been better because George is doing those things, but to pretend that the expenditures. Aren't going higher with those revenues is 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 silly to me because. With that comes a ton more staff time, a ton more products, a ton more marketing. A ton of all of it. So when you say twenty twenty three was eight, whatever you said seventeen.
Seventeen.
And we're asking for nine sixty two. Given a two year difference and what George has achieved in the last two years after he's taken over. Expenditures are going to happen at a higher rate along with the. Everything else that goes with operating that convention center.
Well, but eight, but it's six twenty eight and twenty four, so last year six twenty eight.
And you and I have argued this into the ground, comparing last year to this year is is isn't reasonable. The first year. In budget in twenty twenty three was eight seventeen, which was much higher. I I won't compare. The beginning of a biennium to the end of a biennium request. I'm just, I I just wouldn't.
So what's that fund balance sitting at right now that he draws money out of? Because what I'm hearing is it's at zero.
I think its anticipation was almost zero when we just did the, um. Beginning fund balances for our. Budget we're doing right now.
So what what is the fund that we would look at here? Do you know?
It's it's different ones of one oh six.
One oh six. Okay, so ending balance right this set. Well, sorry, this is a month old. It's three nineteen. And you had two sixty seven. It's had a little bit of, again, this is a month old, so. It's not apples to apples.
And maybe that's where there is a divide in information between. And the city is, what do you want to see? As a part of that operational request, because if it if if we're saying. At this time, based on estimates, because that's all we've got in a budget. And where we're seeing the revenues and expenditures trending, this is how much we anticipate. Is it gonna be? Perfect? Absolutely not. Could it be less? Maybe. Is it more? The CPA says so. I guess my thing is, what would you like to see in order to? Give a definitive number because I I'm just, I'm just a little confused. Where, and this is education for everybody, my first deal, your first deal, how an LTAC committee would. Would would say, no, we don't believe you on your operational budget.
Well, it's on the surface. You you can say what you want to, and it's all about what the fund balance is. It's it's about how we're handling expenses. If we, if at the beginning of your biennium, you're eight seventeen, you go down to six twenty eight. And now you want to go up three hundred thousand dollars more. So that says, I know we're busier. I know our revenues have increased. But what you're telling me is we've actually done better, but we're upside down three hundred thousand dollars more. So it's telling me that more business isn't actually helpful.
That's not how this goes. It's the operational budget for the next year. I'm not saying we're upside down for the year. I'm saying this is what it's going to take to operate. The convention center for the next year.
Yeah, but you aren't, what you're not talking about is the the revenues for the next year. You're talking about your your overhead, but you're not talking about the revenue, and the goal is that. Your overhead is. Obviously going up, but your revenue has increased, and so the difference that you actually need is less. That's the whole goal of trying to to run a convention center.
But saying that. That would happen in just too short. You're, you just heard George. They just started charging people.
Well, I appreciate that, and it's like, I do, but what are the real numbers then is all I'm asking, right?
I'm happy.
How how have we?
Other than I provided the CPA and what she gave me back that I think.
Just like a true. Straightforward. Departmental. Income and expense. I mean, you gave us quite a few pages. And it looks like it's carrying itself. I I've got the notes here, and it looked like it was. Literally taking care of itself, which is the goal. But now we're asking for three hundred thousand more, and I'm like, well, but you're already taking care of yourself. So that's, that's just why I'm looking at numbers.
Yeah, so it's like the cost of goods sold, so you have all your expenditures versus your revenue and what what is. Left, and so I think that. To Rich's point, if last year we asked, you guys asked and somehow made it on. Hundreds of thousands of dollars less, then why is there like what's in the line item where it's three hundred thousand dollars more thi- this year? Like what's driving what? I couldn't determine from looking at the information that was provided. And you guys do it budget different than I'm used to doing a budget. On my budget, you could clearly see from prior year to this year. Oh, well, my, I I'm going to speak in hotel because that's what I do. My housekeeping labor went from a hundred and forty thousand dollars last year to. A hundred and sixty thousand this year, so there's a, you could see the difference, and then you could see like in my revenue productions like. So when I do my budget, I could see like I'm projecting like, let's just say, two million this year. Well, this has been a really crappy year. We haven't had good occupancy. Everyone's dumping rooms, so maybe next year I'm only going to project like one point eight. So it's like the side by side where you could see, and I think that's might be where Rich is having a hard time articulating that he's having a hard time struggling like looking at it. Because I I couldn't personally make sense of it, and I, um. You know. Speaking historically found that, and I'm not saying George has done this. But like, I'm going to use an example. When Diane was there, she had like ten thousand dollars in something for a sound system that Church of the Living Water supposedly used. But really what it came down to was council actually used it, and so we funded it, but by not seeing like. Some of the expenditures, it does make it hard because I get what you're saying. You want uh uh LTAC to trust you and everything, but in the same token. When it's broken down, it's easier to see trends. So like, for instance. Um, if you see outside labor is like a hundred thousand, maybe. LTAC wants to have a conversation like, could you save? Eighty thou- or you know, forty thousand if you didn't have the outside labor and you brought a mountainous employees or like. But without seeing not that way, it makes it hard to have those conversations because. I think to Rich's point, you know, you have Pat there that has that runs a business. You have Rich that runs a business, and I run a business not as advanced as Rich or Pat. But. You can't like ask any questions when you can't articulate the numbers, I is my point.
So with all the supporting data that we were given. Running. Running the convention center based on the supporting documentation. They were eighteen thousand upside down in actual operations. On a. And they've got three hundred and sixty five thousand bucks. Oh. Remaining expectations. Sorry, that's. That doesn't count here. So they're eighteen grand upside down and running the convention center last year. To date. With a. Six hundred and twenty eight thousand dollar ask for supplement. And so if. We're talking about increasing expenses, i.e. having less revenue for the next. Year. That that is like things that are looking pretty good. But then we're seeing that three hundred thousand dollars extra, so it's like, what what's what's hurting it? You know, is it just payroll and that's what we got to roll into it? Is it because we've already hit the top line in revenue and it's really not going to increase any? That's a, that's an explanation. He's like, Rich, we fricking booked fifty two weekends. We're. I can't increase my revenue. Any quicker for this next two year period. It's like, okay, so let's keep revenue exactly the same as it was. But we've got operationally, uh, even if our other fixed costs stay the same, I'm going to have a like percent increase in payroll. Got it. You know, it's it's right there in front of us, but right now it's like. Oh, you did a pretty good job. You you lost eighteen grand operationally for the whole year. Great. That's great job. On six hundred and some thousand bucks of 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 take to subsidize that. The rest of it, you, you know, you earned. That that's all why I'm confused. But then I'm only as good as the information that we've got to try to help. And you've got to tell us where we're wrong.
I guess to Rich's point, is there any places where you could be more conservative in the budget? Um, labor wise or expenditure wise, or you know, like knowing that there might be an issue. Is there places that could be? Tweaked, you know, um. When I do a budget, I get asked those kind of questions. It's pretty common. So is there spots where we could maybe? Um, pad a little less and you know.
Okay, yeah, and I think this this conversation, like I said, I think is a little unfair right at this point because. We have not had the opportunity even be able to play with this budget yet as far as the line items and stuff like that. There may be places I can say. But until I can get in and look at which line items don't need to be there. Or which ones can be reduced. I mean, there's not much we can do with that till we have the software up and running, so I don't know. You know, we're just projecting these numbers, and I I I don't think anybody here is trying to. Get extra money out of LTAC. I mean, I think we're doing what it takes to run the convention center, and. I would hope that it looks like we're doing a much better job and we can get these answers for you, but as of right now, it obviously. You need more information from us than we knew that you needed, so we need to get stuff together for you.
All we have is the story. You haven't given us a budget, right? Because you don't even have a budget, but you're asking for three hundred grand more. Throw us a bone here, help us through the process. You know, help us.
What is the normal process of like coming up with a? A true budget, not a like where you say I'm going to have X in revenue, I'm going to have X in payroll, I'm going to have X in office supplies, I'm going to have X in food cost like. I I guess I missed that the last time or didn't see that, or actually, I think I came on in the. A- after the this part of it. So is there? I guess this is a guesstimate. So when do you actually go and do an actualized budget since that's new to you? I'm hearing that that's.
Well, it's not, it's not, okay, it's not new. It's it's. We don't even have an actual budget, if you will, until after January. After all of this twenty twenty four is closed out, no, no city does. Like you can't, you are going off of trending numbers. The this request is based off of. The projected starting balance, which is in the negative. This request was based off of. Uh, what it took operationally to, um, fund the convention center based on expenses and revenues. What I didn't, uh, do prior to and will, uh. Do for you guys is what did we go into twenty twenty four with? Because when you keep saying. Oh, you're asking for three hundred thousand dollars more, but the first year of the biennium for twenty three, twenty four, we asked for eight seventeen. How much of that eight seventeen did Angie budget? And then we went into twenty twenty four with it. And then that lesser fifty. Yeah, twenty four, and then Angie only had to ask for six hundred and whatever dollars. I can go find that out, but but continuing to say the city is asking for three hundred thousand dollars more, the city is asking for three hundred thousand dollars more. We're asking for what it was expense versus revenue based on the trend of the anticipated fund balance.
Your your CPA put that together? So just, you know, I guess if there's.
He put it together and again, wanted one point.
Understood, understood, but but to everybody's point. It'd be nice to know what the balance carry forward was you're in to your.
That we could go, that is.
That's fine, but.
Almost on our fingertips.
But then also ask the CPA, okay, our ass last year was this, our ass this year is that. Summarize that for us. That's all we need.
Well, and it's all a spreadsheet that I put together, so.
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know. I think the disconnect is what. You potentially started with, which you just articulated that I didn't know. As to you asked for six hundred thousand because maybe you had two hundred that you had sitting there. I don't know because I wasn't part of that, so I think that that. It's easier to look at it from a financial standpoint. If you know, like you just said, we started with this. This is probably why she asked for less because she knew she didn't have to go in as much, but when. You know, you're going in for to Rich's point on paper, three hundred thousand dollars more, and you don't have the piece of information that there was already this in the fund balance. It makes it harder to understand, especially because things aren't itemized, so.
I I think it's a fair question. Just ask the CPA to justify it. It'd be easy.
And it's not. It's not to take away from the hard work you guys did or anything like that. I it's. I'm not trying to make you feel bad, or I don't think anyone was, or that you guys didn't do it like to your truest ability. I think there's just the disconnect. That Sarah brought up of maybe what you started with on that's the six hundred. Ask.
We're just trying to be fiduciary, to have some fiduciary responsibility to our job. And it's just, it's a, it's a dichotomy that needs to be explained and. That's that's basically it. Anything else?
That was fun. One of the things we can do too, since we don't have a lot of extra money this year, it's all going to come down to the numbers, but, uh. Because the goal is to keep money in reserves for the beginning of the year. If. We were to increase over. Last year. But maybe not the full amount, and then we get into spring. When we have the opportunity for another LTAC meeting. And you've got, as she said, we're not going to have a final budget until. January anyway, maybe that gives us the chance of. Amending what you get. Again, based on real budget in January. So it's we're already programming in reserves. So. You want to say something?
No, I'm good.
Well. Sorry, man, it's just asking, asking questions.
No, your phone.
Shannon, do you have anything else to add?
Well, I just want to reiterate, it wasn't trying to be picky towards you guys or anything like that. To Pat's point, there's a fiduciary responsibility and. Quite honestly, I don't think anyone ever looked at the convention center's budget or operating costs or anything before, and I think everyone just rubber stamped it and. You know, I I'm not questioning you guys. I want to make that very clear. Like, I don't think that you're like intentionally. Going to be spending money that doesn't need to be spent, but. I just, I think everyone, myself included, needs to be really fiscally responsible, not knowing. What the economy is going to do, and I I mean to not to be political, but. We might see a huge issue this next year, depending on how this election goes. The country's in a turmoil right now, and we need to be cognate of all sorts of other factors besides just. Ocean shores, so that's just my two cents.
Well, and just so you all know, ocean shores, my standpoint is down. Uh, the food and beverage business is down, our occupancies are down. Um, and we're seeing this change in. Uh, in the economy, our house sales are down. So I know you guys are seeing it in the car business. It's just. This October hasn't been good. Um, and if the trend continues, that's going to dramatically affect. Um, and if the trend continues, that's gonna dramatically affect. Ocean shores and tourism, because. You know, if people stop spending money, they stop traveling, which 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 is a problem. And we, and we do have to be prepared for that it to some degree, um, how severe this gets, who knows, but, you know, as we all know. Economies are cyclical and we may be on a down cycle right now, probably are.
Yeah, I think it's just prudent, I think everyone got, you know, there was a high after COVID, and. You know, I I mean, to my owners, I. Projected downward and they overruled me, and now they're seeing the impacts of overruling me because I predicted that we were gonna go down. Now, I did not predict it going down this far, and you know, we have. Some issues in ocean shores that need to be resolved, because I think some of that's being driven by the way the other hotels are being managed, but. You know, I just. It's a protection for everyone, because the last thing you wanna do is be wrong and and cutting people off, and. I'm gonna be super sensitive about this right now, you don't want to be doing a budget that you have, or and even an event where you're projecting like income and revenue and. It's someone's livelihood, like, I have a spouse that's uh unemployed right now, it's, we're looking at applying on jobs that make. Half of what he was making, and what I'm noticing in jobs right now, just uh as FYI for you guys, is that. Jobs that we're paying for his caliber are literally paying half right now. And there's hundreds of people applying on them, and you know, it's it's. Uh, we've probably done two hundred job applications in the last probably two weeks. And he's had maybe four interviews, so it's a rough season right now for a lot of people, and they're gonna be more conservative, and it's just something to think of as a broad spectrum and how it could impact. People, because even convention center wise, you know, you might have people that are not gonna attend because their their. Their disposable income's a lot less.
How about just back to the money? Our goal is to fund as much as possible. And right now, with just. The budget and repairs. Of convention center, we're at one point four two eight. Which is. Two hundred and forty-eight thousand over the amount of money we're trying to spend this time. Doesn't mean we don't make a decision to spend into the potential pot that might be left over in. February, but at this point, we have nothing to give anybody. Except for. The proposed budget in those two line items. So, an ability to. Have you help us? Get those numbers. Potentially different. So that we are allowed to fund. Some of these other things. That's my motivator here, it's not to. Be people up and be mad, it's because I'm sad. And. You know, we can, we can, we can say, okay, well, let's just spend a little more money, we can do that. But. It would, it would really hurt me to not be able to fund any of these other things. If by. A chance. We don't need to allocate all nine hundred and sixty-two thousand to operations because. We've. Done something different, because there's no question, we know our job is to. Keep that convention center healthy, we know that. It's just really sad to think that. It's a no to everybody else. And sometimes that's the bad decisions you have to make, you just have to say no to everybody else. But boy, sure we'd be great if we don't have to. Are we at a point where we have public comment?
Mm-hmm.
Is there anybody watching? Okay, there's nobody online, okay. There's no public. Any final words?
Thank you.
At this point, we've got the uh. Four folks coming back. I'm not sure we've got money to offer them, but we need to have the conversation. I know that you're going to do your best to see if there's any more manipulation of. Convention center things, um. Funding all these other items is really gonna be based on what you're able to be comfortable with. For kind of the final request.
So are we doing the thirty percent holdback, is that the plan?
Well, we've got it operating, uh.
Well, those need to be updated if the, if we're gonna, because those have. Starting balance, anticipated balance, which we have at one point four, so those need to be updated, uh, if we're gonna try and stick at one point. Well, I mean, it shows that, but it would just be cleaner if we just switched everything to one point two and then. Gave you scenarios based on that.
So so we came up with the operating budget of hypothetically, maybe, maybe if we're lucky, a couple million bucks for the next twelve months.
Right.
And then it's like, let's, let's not just. Go off of what we did last year, let's reduce it by a pretty decent percentage for safety. And so.
Thirty and the twenty.
So that's, that's where you come down to the, you know, hypothetically, one point two. Because you're, 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 you're not so sure about the eight hundred grand between two million and and one point two, and then you've got a carryover balance, as she said, that's. Possibly in the half a million area, maybe four hundred thousand area that that will be there, so. The 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 goal is that that half a million stays there and to can definitely come back for next year. The question is, we're not going to be far enough into this next twelve months to know what's real between. A proposed two million dollars that we. Produced last year and our conservative estimate of how about we spend one point two this time, so we don't get in trouble.
Got it.
Uh, so yeah, it's, it's, it's really a guessing game, and. You know, with their help, maybe we can dip into it a little bit, and if there's ever a time to dip into the money. That we know is gonna be there would be now, because the more we spend now, the more business we're hopefully going to get out of it. Uh, so you gotta spend money to make money.
Right.
But our number one priority is convention center operations, and uh. If we can squeeze anything out of their requests, we have a chance at funding other things.
Okay. Thank you.
Really no new business? Is that how I state it?
Yeah, we put new business on there if you were gonna make action today on any of the applications, because we have to on a special meeting, but. I think it's the intention to come back on the thirteenth to do that.
Yes, ma'am. You guys all comfortable with that? Come, come back on the thirteenth for all decisions. Okay. Uh, my entertaining motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Shannon, and uh. Everyone's available for the meeting on the thirteenth, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Unless I win the lottery, then no.